On this evening, November eleventh, twenty twenty five, we'd like to call our business session school board meeting into order. Madam Clerk.
Mister Percival.
Here.
Miss Ricard.
Here.
Mister Farouk.
Here.
Mister Hedgepath.
Here.
Miss Rizzi.
Here.
Doctor Harris Mohammed. Miss Burke.
Here.
Mister Jafari. Miss Fernandez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
At this time, we'd like to ask for a motion to allow Doctor Harris Mohammed to join virtually.
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Mister Jafari and seconded by Miss Burke. Madam Clerk.
Mister Percival.
Yes.
Miss Ricard.
Yes.
Mister Farouk.
Yes.
Mister Hedgepath.
Yes.
Miss Rizzi.
Yes.
Doctor Harris Mohammed. Miss Burke.
Yes.
Mister Jafari.
Yes.
Miss Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now, we will have our pleasure of allegiance in a moment of silence that be led by Mister Farouk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And now, we'll have our translation services announcement. Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome on behalf of the Language Justice Team. If you need interpretation from English to Spanish, please come see me. I will be in the back with the interpreters. We have interpretation headsets for anyone that needs one. Interpretation in Spanish is also available for those watching this meeting through Zoom. I want to remind everyone to please speak at a normal pace and keep your face no more than a couple of inches from the microphones so that our interpreters can hear you clearly. I will now make the same announcement in Spanish. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos por parte del equipo de Justicia Linguística. Si usted necesita interpretación del inglés al español, por favor diríjase a la mesa de atrás donde estaré yo con los interpretes. Yo les puedo dar audífonos para que puedan escuchar la reunión de la junta escolar en español. Interpretación también está disponible para los que están viendo la reunión a través de Zoom. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to one point zero four approved, the minutes of October sixth, twenty twenty five, and October seventh, twenty twenty five, school board meetings.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the meeting.
It's been moved by Mister Percival and seconded by Mister Jafari, Madam Clerk.
Mister Percival.
Yes.
Miss Ricard.
She has severe hearing problems, including hearing loss, which may be permanent. Tell your doctor if you have any changes in hearing.
Yes.
Miss Rizzi.
Yes.
Doctor Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Miss Burke.
Yes.
Mister Jafari.
Yes.
Miss Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Before we move forward, can we identify what the echo is? Doctor Harris Mohammed, there's a bit of an echo on your end if you can hear us, if you can mute your line. Thank you. And welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. All right. Item one point zero five, adoption of the agenda. Miss Ricard.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the agenda for Tuesday, November eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
It's been moved by Mister Ricard and seconded by Mister Hedgepath, Madam Clerk.
Mister Percival.
Yes.
Mister Ricard.
Yes.
Mister Farouk.
Yes.
Mister Hedgepath.
Yes.
Miss Rizzi. Doctor Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Miss Burke.
Yes.
Mister Jafari.
Yes.
Miss Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now, for a very important part, recognition, we have our student representative, Mister Camaras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am thrilled to introduce Maple Sanchez from Open High School. Maple is a senior at Open where he stands out as both an academic achiever and a passionate advocate for student voice. As a dedicated member of my Student Advisory Council and the Open High Speech and Debate Team, he brings thoughtful insight, strong communication skills, and an unwavering commitment to making education more equitable for all students. An AP scholar, Maple combines intellectual curiosity with a deep sense of purpose. His involvement in political activism, particularly around education policy, reflects his drive to ensure that student perspectives are heard in conversations that shape schools and communities. Outside the classroom, he enjoys exploring creative outlets like photography, visual art, and film. He also enjoys listening to music and staying active through workouts, balancing his academic and advocacy work with personal passions that keep him grounded and inspired. After graduation, Maple plans to attend a four-year university to study public policy with a focus on health policy, following a pre-law track on the path to becoming a health attorney. His goal is to combine his love for policy, justice, and service to improve access and outcomes in healthcare. Maple Sanchez is more than a student leader, he is a change maker. With his intellect, empathy, and vision for a better future, he represents the voice and potential of the next generation of community leaders. Please join me in welcoming Maple Sanchez. Testing, there we go. Good evening, members of Richmond Public Schools Board, Superintendent Jason Camaras, and everyone joining us here and at home. Before I begin, I'd like to extend my deepest gratitude to the individuals who made it possible for me to speak today, including Darryl Williams, Tamika Massey, Larry Carlton, Doctor Danielle Green-Brown, Bell, sorry, apologies, and many others. Thank you all for your continued support and dedication. My name is Maple Sanchez Cardona. I am a proud Hispanic member of a RPS student body and a senior at Open High School. My time in Richmond Public Schools has been a journey that defies categorization, a unique experience that, to me, reflects the very resilience of the human spirit. As a young RPS student, I felt a sense of comfort in what I already knew and therefore faded into the blended background of Latino students. It was my River City Middle School algebra teacher, John Burt, who saw something in me and led me to the opportunity of specialty school applications. For teachers and administrators to enrich opportunities, it is a necessity to have these personal connections with their students and their families in order to set more students' sights on post-secondary planning. My hope for RPS is to continue growing into a district that not only celebrates diversity but ensures every student, regardless of their background or language, feels seen, supported, and capable of post-secondary success. While I do not personally share the exact struggles of our multilingual learner students, I stand here as an advocate for them. They deserve every opportunity to thrive, especially in a world that can feel often feel uncertain and intimidating. I want to first recognize the incredible progress RPS has made in supporting its MLL community. The district has shown initiatives through efforts such as establishing dedicated departments for MLL students, expanding programs like English as a Single Language and Dual Language Immersion, setting goals for increasing the number of certified MLL teachers, working to provide equitable access to rigorous coursework and improving communication with parents and with programs like Conganas, which helps overage and undercredit students reach graduation. All of these are powerful examples of RPS's commitment to belonging, equity, and inclusion. However, despite these efforts, significant challenges persist in how we support MLL students throughout their secondary and post-secondary journeys. According to Jennifer Blackwell, Doctor Jennifer Blackwell, apologies, RPS's Director of MLL Success, enrollment among multilingual learners declined by three hundred fifty-five students in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Even more concerning, only ten newcomers, students born in other countries, enrolled during that period. Chronic absenteeism also remains a pressing issue with demographic data often undertracked, limiting timely interventions. In twenty twenty-four, the graduation rate for Hispanic students stood at sixty-five percent, and for MLL students, just fifty-nine percent, both below the state average. These numbers are not merely statistics, they represent students with dreams, talents, and potential left unrealized. Several factors contribute to these disparities. One of them is language barriers. Many MLL students experience isolation from native English speakers, limiting opportunities for connection in language practice. In schools with large Spanish-speaking populations, teachers without sufficient language training often face challenges providing individualized support despite RPS's commendable efforts to expand resources in welcome centers. Poverty. Broader systemic inequities continue to affect RPS families. Research shows that Black and Hispanic students disproportionately attend schools where the majority of peers come from low-income backgrounds. While not unique to RPS, this reality underscores the importance of continued investment and resources in support systems. Fear in immigration policies. Recent shifts in immigration policy have understandably caused significant fear among families, leading to lower MLL enrollment and less engagement from affected communities. Cultural belonging. Proving by ethnicity or language can unintentionally isolate rather than integrate students. RPS must continue fostering environments where all students feel a true sense of belonging. Right now, much of the focus is appropriately on helping helping MLL students reach graduation, but graduation should not be the finish line, it should be the launching pad. Motivation to graduate increases when students can see a future beyond high school. When MLL students are given the chance to dream, plan, and prepare for post-secondary life, they are far more likely to persist and succeed. This is a shared responsibility for students, teachers, administrators, and the community alike. Some propositions include students taking leadership through student ambassador programs, mentoring peers, and helping new students find their footing, integrating into RPS and leaving RPS as well. Teachers can help establish or expand Latino student unions or other affinity groups to guide MLL students through post-secondary planning. RPS administration can, combined in the Spanish for Educators program, develop a clear and accessible menu of resources for MLL students and strengthen partnerships with community organizations that provide mentorship, college readiness, and family support. For example, one one head, one figurehead of the Latino community in Southside Richmond, he's not very active anymore, however, he did have a pivotal role in my early childhood. Dustin Matthew King, lovingly known as Mateo, notably established many opportunities for Latino families on the Southside of Richmond, including Richmond Conexiones. RPS has the ability to interact with these individuals and ask if they were to so kindly help with fostering connections. Of course, community members and families can be empowered through communication systems, especially for parents who may not be tech savvy or fluent in English. My parents are one of these. The progress RPS has made deserves recognition, but the work ahead demands collaboration and vision. If we come together, educators, students, and community members, we can ensure that every multilingual learner not only reaches the graduation stage but steps confidently into futures they've had the chance to imagine. I look forward to seeing further support implementations carried out in RPS in the future. Thank you for your time, your service, and your commitment to the students of Richmond Public Schools.
Thank you so much. Well said. Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll receive proclamation for Family Engagement Month.
My name's Jakema. I'm in tenth grade, and I attend Richmond Success Academy. National Family Engagement Month. Whereas Richmond Public Schools recognizes that families are our students first and most important teachers, and that family engagement is a key driver of student success in school and beyond. And whereas National Family Engagement Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the many ways families contribute to the academic achievement, social, emotional growth, and well-being of students across our division. And whereas, meaning, meaningful family engagement involves building authentic two-way partnerships between schools, families, and communities grounded in trust, collaborations, and respect. And whereas the RPS Engagement Office, school-based family liaisons, and community partners works tirelessly to connect families with resources, amplify their voices, and strengthen relationships. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Richmond Public Schools hereby recognizes November two thousand twenty-five as National Family Engagement Month and calls upon all schools and community members to join in this recognition.
All right, next up, we have received proclamation for National School Psychology Week.
Tavarius Martin, Richmond Success Academy, eleventh grade. I'm here to tell you about National School Psychology Week, whereas Richmond Public Schools recognizes and celebrates our dedicated school psychologists who work to meet students' needs, provide counseling, and intervention, and strengthen the connection between home and school. Whereas, the theme of National Psychology Week, Finding Your Path, reflects the way that school psychologists help students, families, and school communities set and achieve their goals, and whereas school psychologists partner with their teachers, administrators, and family to help remove barriers to learning, ensuring that every student feels welcomed, heard, loved, and supported. And whereas, through expertise and compassion, school psychologists embody the RPS values of equity, empathy, and excellence. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, that Richmond Public Schools recognizes November third through the seventh, twenty twenty-five, as National School Psychology Week, and encourages all schools and community members to join this celebration.
Wonderful. Last but not least, received proclamation and recognition of Veterans Day.
My name is Hassan. I'm in eighth grade in the I-ten Richmond Success Academy. Whereas Veterans Day is a time to honor and express our deepest gratitude to the brave men and women who have served in the United States Army Forces. And whereas, these individuals have demonstrated courage, sacrifice, and unwavering dedication in defending our nation's freedom and ensuring the safety and security of all Americans. And whereas, Richmond Public Schools celebrates that many of our students, families, and staff members are themselves veterans or are part of military families whose service and resilience strengthen our community. And whereas, our schools are committed to teaching students the importance of civic duty, patriotism, and respect for those who have served our country with honor. And now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Richmond Public Schools hereby recognize November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, as Veterans Day, and calls upon all members of the RPS community to join in honoring our veterans for their extraordinary service and sacrifice.
Thank you so much. We are going to now take pictures, and we'll start with Maple. So if the board could make your way down.
All right, at this time, we'll move forward to a three point zero one announcements. Doctor Harris Mohammed.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Happy Tuesday. I have a few announcements that I would like to share at this time. I would like to take this opportunity to send a huge congratulations to Principal Dabney, the MLK staff and students, and the mentoring program UB one hundred for receiving a grant from the Richmond Behavior Authority yesterday. They had a press conference yesterday. I was unable to attend, however, I was there in spirit. So congratulations and continue doing the great work and the hard work that you all are continuing to do at MLK Middle School and in the community. Everything that you all do impacts student outcomes. So thank you. Congratulations. This is huge for you, Principal Dabney, and your staff. So thank you so, so very much for the work that you all do together. My second announcement is, I just want to take the opportunity again to say thank you. A personal thank you to Doctor Bell for standing and to receive the Hall of Fame Award on behalf of our late Riddick Parker and his family, wife, and children. Mister Parker was recognized on October the sixteenth for his dedication to South Hampton County Public Schools, academic program, athletics program, and the community service that he provided. So Doctor Bell, again, thank you so very much for doing that. And Richmond Public Schools family, Mister Parker's legacy, and his hard work continues to live on in the students that he poured into. So thank you so very much. That concludes my announcements for this evening.
Thank you. Miss Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to acknowledge the Wellness Department, Engagement Department, and all of the departments that were in place regarding the fresh market, RPS market at Fox Springs Elementary. I had an opportunity to visit on the first day, and it was absolutely divine. If you haven't been to the market, I mean, there was chicken breasts, watermelons, pineapples, even toasted sandwiches, just everything from one end to the other. And it was so welcoming, and it was great to see parents come in with the big wagons, and everybody was just so helpful. the big wagons and everybody was just so helpful. So hats off to Mrs. Parks and her team and others in the system that I didn't want to leave. It was just that welcoming, just that accommodating and food for our families. So thank you so very much for that job. Well done. I also would like to recognize the Synergy Technology Company. Mrs. Rowe is the proprietor of that business and a great supporter of Virginia Commonwealth University. In the 7th District, each school has the opportunity to have a teacher to be recognized. I need to send the pictures. I post them. I haven't had a chance to do that yet. But each teacher that puts his or her name in a basket, their name is pulled and they get four free tickets, front row, at a VCU basketball team game. So far, we've had, out of our seven schools in the 7th District, Shimmerazzo had the first game, and the next will be Bellevue. I think it's tomorrow morning where the basketball team comes into the school and they were so massive and so tall that our students and staff, it was like, okay, it was, it was awesome. Coach Rozell, I think his name is, they did a, through Mrs. Rowe and the technology program, they're doing STEM activities in every 7th District school. So they had oranges cut in half, and with the oranges, they made electricity. So the students were just, just taken away by what was done. It was a hands-on project. And the next day, the teacher, Ms. Harrington, second grade teacher, went to the basketball game, four tickets. And depending upon the score, the school would get thousands of dollars. So we're very grateful to that partnership with Synergy Technology and VCU. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Hetchpath?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick announcements. One, our November 4th District Parent Teacher Advisory Council will be held, that meeting will be held on Monday the 24th at 5:30. This time, it will be at Westover Hills Elementary School. That's one that, again, that will rotate through all of the schools in the fourth. If you're not a current participant, I encourage you to join us. Anyone is welcome. Light refreshments will be served. If you need, if you'd like the agenda beforehand and to get onto the communications, please email me and I'll add you to that. We welcome you at that point. My other announcement is, I just want to say at this point of the year, as we're coming to Thanksgiving, that I wanted to share, I'm very thankful for my colleagues here on the dais, as well as the RPS community. It's a very strong community, and I'm very thankful for, for every one of you all. I, we, we talked a little bit about a, recently, the training that we had gone to. I know a number of us had reflected on that two weeks ago. We went to our, our mandatory, mandatory training with the Virginia School Board Association. And that was a moment for us to bond further than we have previously. And so I just wanted to share my gratitude for my colleagues up here, but also for the RPS community. And I wish everyone a happy and healthy Thanksgiving holiday.
Ms. Ricard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since it's Family Engagement Month, I just wanted to thank the engagement efforts with the Office of Engagement and VCU. They've been doing a lot of things in District 2. They recently hosted a math and paint night at Carver. They helped out at Dogwood on Halloween. And we are starting to talk with Principal Cheatham about things that can be done at Richmond Success Academy. So I appreciate their efforts there. Fox Elementary is doing a kindness month, and I just think I wanted to mention that. It's lovely. It's random acts of kindness. And so just keep that in mind this month. Mr. Hetchpath talked about gratitude and how can we put that and kindness out into our world. And finally, I just wanted to thank all our teachers. I know it's Conference Month. I know those take a lot of time. I had a conference today with one of my children's teachers. And as a parent, I really appreciate the 15 minutes to talk and talk about concerns and hear how they are in their class and share any successes or challenges. So thank you, teachers. I know it's something, but as a parent, I do really appreciate it.
Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, this is kind of small, but I attended Most Adorable Trunk and Treat right before Halloween at the Maymont Preschool Center. And it was just adorable. I mean, all the little princesses and the ninja turtles. And it was so well done. And so I want to express gratitude to the parents who showed out and put together those elaborate setups, setups in their trunks. Like, I didn't even know you could do some of the things that they did in the backs of these trucks. I mean, trunks, like, they were like full out, like productions. And it was so amazing and so well organized. So I do want to shout out Principal Pride and her staff. It was just a lovely event, and you could see how much the kids appreciated it. And I do want to also highlight, you know, I've posted about this on social media, but they are looking for someone to help with grounds cleanup on a semi-periodic basis. They haven't really been able to attract volunteers who are showing up regularly. And that front area could use some real beautification and love. And so if any of you know of any organizations who are interested in service projects, please reach out to Principal Pride, or you can let me know. Thanks.
Mr. Jafari?
Good evening. Thanks, Madam Chair. I want to echo the sentiments about the Fall Fest and the trunk of treats. It was enormous, just going around and seeing all of the youngsters throughout the 8th District. If I had to pick one, you know, one that really struck me the most, it was seeing the precaries at Summer Hill. They had the whole field laid out with pumpkins and just to watch them class by class just come out and just run out and pick their own pumpkin. Just had to basically run behind one young man. He had a shopping bag full of pumpkins, couldn't even get him back up the hill. But, but it was all fun, and I really commend Principal Doxley and all of her staff, as well as all of the staff at all the schools throughout the 8th District for the work they went into bringing the community out and having all of the goodies there and sharing together. Want to also take this opportunity to send some congratulations to Principal Green over at Broad Rock and the staff and students for the accredited status that they've achieved at Broad Rock. And they really set the, set the pathway for others of our schools to follow. And I'm, I'm sure we will all get there. We're not off by a lot of percentiles. So I'm quite sure we'll get there. Lastly, and owing to the Veterans Day, the recognition of Veterans Day, my colleagues were trying, wanted me to stand out there, but generally, I leave that for the members of the public that attend and for our employees. But I did. I was a Marine, honor graduate from Prince Island. In that regard, I, I just want, I look at the times we live in, and I just wanted to remind us all that, you know, we would never promise the more perfect union, more, a perfect union. What we were charged with, rather, was a duty to make this a more perfect union. Thanks to our United States veterans, we still had that choice and that charge. On behalf of the 8th District and all of our veterans and veteran families, from my great-grandfather, a veteran of the Spanish-American War, to our 35th President John Fitzgerald Kennedy Senior, whom I might add paid the ultimate price, I thank them all for their service, and I salute you.
Thank you. Mr. Faruk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, quick announcement that Henderson Middle School in the 3rd District is hosting a free farmer's market tomorrow from 3:45 PM to 5:00 PM. So it's open to all families on a first-come, first-served basis where you can pick up fresh fruits, vegetables, and pantry stables. And that's thanks to a lot of community partners who work together to make that happen. Also announced that next month, on Monday, December 8th, myself and our 2nd District Representative Ms. Ricard will be hosting a town hall at Maggie Walker Governor's School at 7:00 PM. And that is targeted on a conversation about the new access, the new accreditation or the new quality standards from the state, as well as many, many changes that are happening in public education statewide that will affect our students. So we want to make sure that we give our parents and staff an opportunity to learn about those changes and have an open conversation with us about how we're preparing for them. And lastly, I'll just give a quick update that today I attended, I visited, rather, three schools in the 3rd District and met with our partners at Child Savers, who have clinicians and mental health staff onsite at these schools, and just had an open conversation about the process that we have where our school-based mental health teams work very hard, our counselors, our school psychologists, our assistant principals, and when we have them, our RBHA or our mental health clinicians that are onsite to figure out and target our students who need support, who might be struggling with something that might affect their learning or affect their behaviors. And there's a reason, you know, again, we rightfully should keep celebrating our students and parents and the incredible achievements we've made in increasing our graduation rates, increasing our test scores. But it takes a lot of hard work and a lot of collaboration to make that happen. And today, I got a chance to sit with some of our clinicians and talk about what are the conversations they're hearing from our students? What are the things that our students are struggling with? And when I asked them, if they're, what, what do you wish people in power knew about the work you do in our schools with our children? Overall, they said, one, that there's a definite need for more resources. You, you know, these are full-time clinicians that are located in our schools. They're there, you know, from morning to evening with all the other staff. So they're familiar with the community and the school and the other staff at the school. And I think that makes them much more effective than someone that might occasionally come in once in a while. So one, the need for resources like that, to invest in people like that. And two, the other is just the fact that it takes an extraordinary amount of courage for our young people to even open up to that kind. I know for myself, there's no way you would have gotten me as a high schooler to open up to my counselor or to anybody about anything I was struggling with at school. And so the, our kids are opening up. They're accepting help. They're working hard. And so we need to keep our eyes on the fact that this is such an important resource that we're able to provide. And it's part of why we, part of why when people say, well, where is all the money going? This is some of the ways in which we're investing in our children. And just wanted to, again, appreciate all of our staff and kids for doing that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So I have several announcements as well. First, I'd like to share that River City will be having a cornhole tournament coming up on November 13th. Several schools in the area will be joining. So that will be super exciting. So hopefully, folks can join in. Also, they'll be having the Illuminating Vibes event. I had the opportunity to go last year where they have kind of like a blackout and have like neon lights and sticks and things that they throw. It's, it's so fun. So that should be a treat as well. I also had the opportunity to visit Clark Springs for the first day of the, is it called the Love? The Love Market. And I will just say, it's top-notch. It feels, it looks like going into a grocery store. And I just really want to thank the administration, Mrs. Parks, for her passion, particularly in just being the brainchild of putting something together so quickly that positively impacts so many families. As I was walking up, families were lined up. And not just that, but just the staff as they were received. You know, I witnessed as families came through and were being served, they were truly being served with love. So thank you so much. This is a perfect example of how, when things in our society happen, we just band together and figure it out. And so we just appreciate the support that you all put into that work. I know that it did not, you know, happen overnight, but it happened overnight. And so we thank you for that. Also, just want to send a special thank you to my colleague, Mr. Jafari, for joining me for our joint town hall. I don't know what week it was. I feel like all the days are going by so fast. Was it last week? Felt like a couple of weeks ago. Start to many more. And so just thank you for those who were able to come out. We had really great conversation and discussion, things that we took back, and we will begin to incorporate in some future information that we'll be sharing with you. Special thanks to Luke, I don't know if he's hosted, or is he here tonight, for his help with, he's always very helpful in just grabbing the data and ensuring that we have what we need to prepare. Also, just want to share, I'm looking at my notes, and I don't know what this, oh, November 22nd, the school board will be serving with Delegate Mike Jones at River City Middle School for his annual turkey giveaway. We're really excited. More information to come, but we'll be, the board will be there to serve a table, giving out gift cards and some RPS swag. So if you can make it, I believe it's from 10 to 3:00. But it's socialized on social media, Delegate Mike Jones. We thank him for his continued support to the community and to RPS families. I'd also like to call out, please forgive me if I pronounce any names wrong, but please join me in congratulating seven RPS teachers who participated this year as fellows in the Yale National Initiative. I want to call their names out. They were able to go and be a part of the conference, and surely they'll come back and with, you know, armed with information to disseminate to their schools. But I want to call them out Alexandra Amorato from Barack Obama Elementary, LJ DeLeo from Huguenot High School, Catherine Franzel from Westover Hills Elementary, Amanda McMahon, I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong, from Huguenot High School, Valerie Schwartz from Mary Munford, Vivian Lee Taylor from Thomas Jefferson, and Landon Walker from Thomas Jefferson. Just want to congratulate them for this well-deserved achievement. And last but certainly, not least, we have a birthday in the house. Our very own Vice Chair Percival is turning 27 tonight. And so we want to wish you a very, very happy birthday, and thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve alongside you, along with the rest of the board. It feels like we've been together for several years, but it's only been since January. But happy birthday to you. Thank you. All right, moving right along, we will have transition into public comment. Madam Clerk, if you could read the guidelines, please.
Conduct of Speakers. Speakers shall state their full legal name prior to addressing the school board. Speakers will address the school board as a whole, rather than individual school board members, the division superintendent, school board attorney, clerk, or any other staff member. School board will listen to comments but will not respond during the public information period. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to, one, campaign for public office, two, promote private business ventures, or, three, use profanity or vulgar language. If a community member's comments during the public information session relate to school-based issues, the chair may refer that individual to Richmond Public Schools Administration for one-on-one consultation and follow-up. It is important that all community members who wish to participate in the public information period abide by the guidelines set forth in this policy. Refusal to abide by that policy result in the forfeiture of the remaining time that has been allotted to the speaker. Community members may express their views in writing in lieu of any oral presentation. Comments received in writing in lieu of an oral presentation will not be read during the meeting, but shall be posted to the school board platform, board docs.
Thank you. At this time, we will call up our pre-registered speakers, as we have done consistently in the past. Because of the amount of speakers, we will not have the opportunity to receive any one additional from the public this eve- additional from the public this evening. We have a total of 23 speakers. If you could come up four at a time, there'll be a clipboard if you could sign your name. If you have not already, I saw some that were already proactive in doing that, so thank you for that. We'll try to get through everyone as quickly as possible. We thank you for your patience. At this time, we'll ask Ellen Samuels, Wendelin Ottwell, Jacob Neil Helt, and Andrea Bryant. And there may be some in overflow, so we'll give them time. Please feel free to come right up. Just state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Gwen Ottwell. Sorry, can you hear me? Okay. So hello, my name is Gwen Ottwell. I'm a member of Richmond for All, serving on our governing board. I'm here tonight asking you to vote no on the proposed collective bargaining resolution changes. When this collective bargaining resolution was first introduced four years ago, it was a beacon for organized labor across the state and served as another milestone in Virginia's shift out of the bad old days of good old boy Virginia politics and into a more progressive and democratic future. Collective bargaining in Richmond Public Schools is a beacon because it's powerful. Like any other democratic institution, the more successful collective bargaining is in achieving meaningful democratic wins for working people, the more the powers that be will fight to take it away. Plenty of bosses and powerful people will pay lip service to the importance of democratic institutions like unions but stop short of giving them any real power. Tactics like these are so pernicious because they use democratic window dressing to sanitize some extremely undemocratic behavior. We see these tactics playing out on a national stage as millions of Americans are asked to trade their health care for a functioning federal government, and we see these here tonight. As the body has reminded us multiple times over the last few months, this is not a democratic process. Tonight, the only voices that matter belong to the people in this room standing on a dais. There have been repeated appeals to unions and supporters to be reasonable and compromise. I believe the phrase "put down your pitchforks" was used at one point. All of these came with an implied or else. Union members have engaged in these conversations diligently and in good faith in hopes to keep what should already be theirs, a four-year-old collective bargaining resolution that was itself already a product of reasonable and good-faith negotiation on their part. The existing resolution has been used to protect union members when they reported dangerous working conditions, asked for raises, and advocated for their students. It is true that union organizers and the public cannot decide the outcome this evening. That said, democratic politics is an ever-swinging pendulum. While this process has not been democratic, it has produced some of the most compelling public comment I've ever heard. It is my sincere hope that some RPS union member who has spoken or organized as part of this process finds themselves on that dais sooner rather than later. And as a member of the Board of Richmond for All, I'd just like to say, if anyone listening in this audience or at home, if your school board member votes to gut collective bargaining in Richmond Public Schools tonight and you want help making it onto that dais, please come find us. We want to talk to you. Thank you for your time.
Hello, members of the school board, cameras, and the public. My name is Jacob Neil Helt, and I am a member of the REA Board of Directors and a social science teacher at Richmond High School for the Arts. I am here to share my hope that the school board will vote no to any proposed changes to the collective bargaining resolution. I will be followed throughout this public comment period by members of REA who have volunteered to read the priorities that were approved by membership in May of this year aloud, along with justifications for each. Additionally, I would like to bring the school board's attention to the bills VA HB 2764 and SB 917 that were passed by General Assembly earlier this year but vetoed by the current Governor Youngkin. These bills provided a framework for collective bargaining that is much more progressive than what RPS is currently proposing. The reason I mention these are because Abigail Spanberger has already committed to signing them into law, and this statewide framework would negate any of the proposed changes being made today. I believe that would be prudent of the school board to apply a wait-and-see approach to this collective bargaining resolution. Rather than risk making changes that could be reversed by state law and would then create negative perceptions of this school district as trying to limit our workers' voices and rights,
Thirty seconds.
Why don't we continue the current negotiation cycle using the original resolution and delay any possible changes until after new state representatives take office? Instead of creating limitations, let's work together to continue in developing procedures around collective bargaining that do not risk negatively impacting our workers and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. While you're coming up, is Ellen Samuels here? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. On October 7th, the RPS school board voted to delay the decision-
State your name, Ms. Bryant.
Oh, sorry. I'm Andrea Bryant. I apologize. REA president. On October 7th, the RPS school board voted to delay the decision on the changes to the collective bargaining resolution until November 11th with the idea to provide union partners a chance to provide input. We truly appreciate that decision. Afterwards, the RPS administration shared a schedule where the RPS administration served as the intermediary between the unions and the school board. During the time between October 7th and today, there were a total of five meetings that were attended by the REA, especially with the fact that the unions wanted to meet and communicate as a group to ensure cohesiveness. These meetings were not structured with some type of agenda or plan, nor were they as collaborative or transparent as union partners would have liked until we had the November 5th meeting in person. While we were able to talk and make some great progress, the resulting document still does not accurately reflect union voices, especially considering that we never expected to get everything we asked for. Union members were really concerned that the school board members were not directly involved in the process of negotiating the collective bargaining resolution. With the resolution being school policy, we hoped that the school board members would have more input. The unions would have loved for public meetings to be held in the interest of as much transparency as possible. Union members, especially REA members, are disappointed and frustrated with this process. As such, the REA's Representative Assembly voted against supporting the amendments to the collective bargaining resolution, and we encourage the school board to do the same. It is essential that drafting school policy is done transparently and in public. We greatly appreciate the invitation from Dr. Harris Muhammad to speak about the collective bargaining resolution last Wednesday despite there being some conflicts with the union schedule. We hope that the school board will vote no to the current iteration of the collective bargaining resolution and/or provide time for a detailed, public, and collaborative process that allows for thorough research, pre-scheduled meetings, and direct communication between the union partners, their members, the RPS administration, and school board members. This type of thoughtful process takes time and involves research because ideas, solutions, and their effects should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll ask Angelica Perez, James Smith, Dr. Carl Vaughn, and Colleen
Hello. My name is Angelica Perez, and I'm a career educator with experience working in Maryland and Virginia. I'm here to advocate on behalf of the REA union because I believe that the union has been working tirelessly to negotiate a fair contract for our staff but feel discouraged by the rushed timeline and increased stipulations on negotiation terms. As someone who has worked under the protection of one of the most powerful unions in the country, Prince George's County, Maryland, I can tell you that unions bring dignity, creativity, intentionality, and activism to the teaching career. Our role as teachers requires that we advocate for ourselves and our students because the more dignity and freedom that we demand for ourselves, the more creativity, energy, and passion we can present for our students. All that starts with a fully fleshed-out contract that defines our rights and responsibilities. This protects both the teacher, administration, and the school board because it dictates the roles of all the stakeholders involved in education and how we set boundaries in order to maintain professional relationships. A contract should dictate working hours, working conditions, clearly address any questions an employee may have about the position, including pay, pay scale, extra pay for extra duties, et cetera. These things are all vital pieces of information for educators to know about the position we are in. The contract works as a guide, reference material, and a place to advocate for ourselves. In Maryland, if I had a question about working conditions, hours, time off, observations, or most anything, I had a copy of my contract for reference. I always knew what to expect. As an educator, I expect that kind of accountability for myself and my district, but when I came to Virginia, things were vastly different. Everything that was outlined in the contract on paper and PDF was now in an editable Google document-
Thirty seconds.
-that describes the entire school. A contract became a handbook and was individualized per school, meaning that administration dictated the experience of any school. That is too much pressure for administration and too much uncertainty for teachers who may want to stay but are not sure if they will be treated by any other school. So I urge you to vote no on the proposed changes to collective bargaining and allow our negotiation team to go back to the table without limiting the creativity or advocacy that each of us were hired to utilize and bring out in our schools.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Jim Smith, Local 592. You're probably going to hear from a lot of naysayers. I want to give you an accurate picture of what has transpired since you delayed this. We first started meeting virtually. We were singing off of two different hymn books. It wasn't going well. I suggested that we meet in person. Superintendent suggested we sing off the same hymn book. We had two meetings in person. They were very productive. We compromised and we agreed on what's before you tonight. Anybody that's telling you otherwise was not in the room or was not present. I believe the compromise reflects fairly what both sides agreed to, and I also believe this is a living document, and it can be changed in the future if we find out there's other issues. But Local 592 supports what's before you tonight to vote on, and we recommend a yes vote. Thank you.
Please refrain from public outbursts. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. As you will know, my name's Carl Vaughn, representing Jump Start U2, better known as JSU2. I watched last night's meeting and want to thank you for your persistence. Your commitment to solving tough challenges for families, Richmond families, is clear and appreciated. JSU2 shares your goal, helping families stabilize so RPS can educate. But to that, we need space to operate alongside you, not apart from you. We often hear "working with the community." JSU2 isn't asking for symbolism. We're offering real collaboration. Will RPS move beyond language and lean into action? Tonight, I want to address the proposal to renovate Thompson Middle for swing space. You've already committed to Richmond School of the Arts, RTC at the Altria site, Woodville Elementary. Adding Thompson and other programs stretches limited resources even further. River City, Lucio Brown, and Bushall Middle School each sit on 15 to 20 acres. These campuses can support modest additions to address overcrowding without full-scale renovation. Thompson was closed for a reason. It was aging, inefficient, and no longer viable. Reopening it now feels like recycling buildings without solving root issues. Rezoning keeps getting dismissed over rival community concerns, but that narrative is outdated and it's costly. North of the river, buildings with space are being ignored while new vacancy issues are created elsewhere. That's not strategy, it's avoidance. Meanwhile, the Altria building already has space for swing use. You're raising funds for it now. It can house a full academic school and serve the RTC program. Rentings have been shared publicly, but the district has confirmed, excuse, but the district has confirmed its potential. It's a viable, active asset far more strategic than reopening a closed facility. Why not support RTC and solve swing space in one move? This is what real partnership looks like. JSU2 is a viable, strategic, and doesn't require tens of millions of dollars. I thank you for this time, and each time I come, I'm not just coming with an ask, but I'm coming to you bringing viable solutions. Again, thank you for your hard work, and we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. One last call for Colleen Will. Kathleen, I'm sorry, Will. Chloe Trumper. Lisa DeLeo. Sophia Barbary. Barbary. Apologies if I mispronounced your name.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Wall. I'm a member of REA and work as a LEAP teacher at River City Middle School. One of our bargaining priorities is creating and protecting a harassment-free workplace because every employee deserves safety, respect, and a voice. We're asking for a stronger, transparent grievance procedures and clear standardized policies for reporting and addressing harassment. A fair transfer process, true workplace autonomy, and the full protection of federal rights are all essential to staff, safety, and dignity. Educators must also have a voice in hiring administrators and in the district budget process, decisions that directly affect school climate and working conditions. So I'm talking here about grievance procedures, and this is important due to the anti-union behavior of management in the past. In June 2023 and 2024, the REA dealt with bad-faith bargaining by management, management retaliation of American Sign Language interpreters by trying to strip their tenure rights and worsen working conditions, and a refusal to grant an unpaid leave of absence for the REA's president, which had been a longstanding practice prior to that year. The management and school board eventually fired the REA president rather than grant an unpaid leave of absence. February 2025, REA members in the Central Office Bargaining Unit spoke out publicly about the abuse and toxic workplace under the HR chief, and the chief ultimately was forced out of RPS. Summer 2025, REA members joined RPS bus drivers who are members of Launa 804 to protest the retaliatory firing of five RPS bus drivers for speaking out at a school board meeting regarding their overtime rights.
Thirty seconds.
The drivers were eventually reinstated in August 2025 but lost longstanding overtime pay rights. So now, in September 2025, the RPS management blindsided REA union leadership with proposed changes to the collective bargaining ordinance that would substantially and permanently limit bargaining and impede workers' rights to organize. At the October school board meeting, the board decided to delay voting on the superintendent's proposed changes to the collective bargaining resolution. They heard our deep concerns, but we've been rushed through a series of private meetings with only the administration and union reps present.
Thank you so much for your time. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chloe Trumper. I'm a member of the REA. I'm a District 4 resident. I work at Bushall Middle School as a science teacher, also an academic architect for the district. I'll be honest, I'm tired and I do not want to be here for the second time in the last month. I'm here, though, because I know how important this vote is, and I want to ensure you all hear me when I say, "vote no." Two of the union's top priorities are fair competitive compensation and safe, healthy spaces for learning, the bare necessities needed for a successful school. We are asking for a more transparent pay scale with reduced steps so employees can afford to work and stay in the district long-term. Teachers who put in time and effort toward advanced degrees, national board certification, and other programs that elevate the quality of learning in our district should be earning- and other programs that elevate the quality of learning in our district should be earning additional compensation. We are also asking for safe schools. Benefits for all with sick time upfront and preventative health days protect both staff and students. Safe schools means honoring occupancy limits, maintaining consistent temperature control, and ensuring clean air and ventilation by enshrouding AHRRA and Virginia Code standards in our contract. Full ADA accessibility for all disabilities must be guaranteed so every member of our community can learn and work safely. Which leads me to ask you, why are we here in this building again tonight? You know it is difficult to park here, and getting into the building is challenging for those with mobility issues. There would be more people here tonight to urge the board to vote no if we were in a different space. In fact, there are people who showed up tonight but left because they were made to wait outside, and it is very cold out tonight. Despite this, I'm here tonight to urge all of you to vote no to the proposed changes to the collective bargaining resolution.
Thirty seconds.
We deserve the opportunity to negotiate in good faith for fair, competitive, and transparent compensation and benefits, and for safe learning spaces for our staff and our students. If you vote yes tonight, you are telling the people who show up day in and day out to serve RPS students with love that their work is not important, their time is not valued, and their health does not matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lisa, or LJ DeLaO, and I'm a teacher at Huguenot High School. I live in the 8th District, and I'm also an REA member. I'm here today to urge you once again to vote no on the superintendent's proposed changes to the collective bargaining resolution so we can negotiate in good faith to improve transparency and community involvement. We should be negotiating our next contract, but instead, union leadership have had to stretch themselves to meet an unrealistic timeline and attend last-minute meetings. Our original resolution, which involved our contract negotiation team, was ratified by the REA membership. At our latest rep assembly, we voted unanimously to reject these proposed changes to our resolution. These changes diminish our rights to negotiate a strong contract for staff that impacts students. A strong collective bargaining resolution ensures that we are able to improve our working conditions. These improvements would have immediate benefits for our students' learning conditions. One of the priorities is to see a transparent and school-based budget where each school's staff and student population can provide their feedback and directly receive those funds. We have students who have parents that have been taken by ICE, and a school-based budget could provide more specific support for those students so that they don't give up on school in order to tend to that family emergency. Every day, I show up for my students. Every week, I pay out of my own pocket to provide for my students. Now I need my district to show up for me. Please vote no on these anti-worker, anti-union changes.
Thank you. As you come forward, I also ask Quentin Robbins, Orbin Little, Emily Yen, and Egon Schraude to come forward as well. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Camerus, and the Richmond community. My name is Sophia Barbieri, and I'm an REA member and an English teacher at Henderson Middle School. Last month, this board voted to delay this decision to compensate for the fact that this proposal was initially presented to the union last minute and on very short notice by collaborating with workers and bringing the process into the light. That collaboration never happened. The delay wasn't transparency, but it was a stall. It gave the appearance of listening while the same anti-worker proposal was quietly discussed behind closed doors in the hopes that it could be moved forward without the input of the reps nor the executive board. Educators showed up in good faith. We asked for open meetings, honest dialogue, and a chance to shape the politics that affect our classrooms. Instead, we got silence, confusion, and 11th-hour edits. If the process to change collective bargaining has to be hidden and rushed because the proposal itself cannot stand up to public scrutiny, these changes limit what we can negotiate, strip away neutral arbitration, and threaten workers who speak up, plain and simple. That's not efficiency; that's an attack on labor rights. You can't claim to value collaboration while ignoring the voices of the very people you employ. Collective bargaining is about trust and shared power, and this process has betrayed both. So tonight, do the one transparent thing left to do: vote no. Stand with educators, stand with workers, and stand with the public, who are watching closely to see whose side you're on. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Quentin Robbins. I'm an organizer with Teamsters Local 322. So last Tuesday, I went to bed with a lot of hope. We saw everyday people push back against authoritarianism and corruption, and that was occurring from Richmond to New York. Unfortunately, in the last week, I have been robbed of a little bit of that hope. Just when I feel that there are some elected officials who are ready to stand up just a little bit for the working class, for working-class people, there's another politician that's supposed to be on our side, working to hurt us. Democracy at every level is under threat in this country, including in our workplaces. I'm asking you all to stand on the side of democracy and against authoritarianism. Now, I fear that folks on this board are attempting to pit teachers and staff interests against students. When students have teachers in the district who are experienced, when they have staff who dedicate their lives to RPS, as they do today, students thrive. Their interests are one and the same. You know, I'm not interested in getting in a back-and-forth about, you know, what happened in the last month. I was in the room negotiating. The board has my opinion and writing. You know, I think I disagree with the perspective of Mr. Camerus, but what I want to talk about is whether or not this is good policy. If it's pro-worker, pro-student, it's not, and I think Virginia voters agree. I gave Ms. Richardson a handout. I hope you look at it after the meeting. Details, the bill that was mentioned before, but in this general assembly session, members are going to pass legislation that would undo the proposed changes that are on the table tonight. That means July 1, this goes away. And, you know, again, Governor Spanberger has committed to signing that bill, would in fact strengthen what we already have. So I just want to be clear, you're out of step. You know, the core cost from Mr. Camerus, or the core complaint from Mr. Camerus has been costs.
Thirty seconds.
We asked for a cost breakdown under the existing resolution. We didn't get it. I think a number floated around was 150K, but I was shocked to see that the division posted a central office job for Deputy Chief of Staff for 180. Democracy costs, but for collective bargaining in RPS, I think it's worth more than just another overpaid central office job. In sum, vote this down. Be on the side of democracy everywhere. Be on the side of the progress we advanced last Tuesday.
Thank you.
We'll do better fighting on the same side.
Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Emily Yen. I'm a consultant at Teamsters Local 322. I'm President Brian Payton of Teamsters 322, ISIC, and is unable to express his opposition around this collective bargaining resolution. This is, RPS made history in 2021, or sorry, in 2022, when they were the first district in Virginia to sign a collective bargaining agreement after the bargaining law went into effect in 2021. This law for allowed a limited scope of collective bargaining. Governor-elect Abigail Spanberger wanted to make progress on, with collective bargaining, and has agreed to sign a collective bargaining bill that would allow a full scope of bargaining. This was the same bill that Governor Youngkin vetoed last year. It is important to have a full set of topics to bargain. There are many win-win solutions that can be gained around student academic achievement, working, safety issues, and a myriad of other issues related to building safety.
Thirty seconds.
It's very important that you, that we are able to find solutions around, address the serious mold issues and HVAC issues, and this shouldn't be coming at the expense of worker pay issues. And so I urge you to vote no so we can find win-win solutions together. Thank you.
Thank you. As you come forward, I also ask Carrie Tredway, Elizabeth Berenstein, Jen Summers, and Stephen Strauss. Good evening.
Hello. Can you hear me? Yes. Is that good? Madam Chair, if I may ask you for a tiny favor, instead of vocally saying 30 seconds, would you mind just raising your hand and I can see it?
That is the clerk that's saying it. I'm not saying it at all, but thank you for the request. That's not me.
Okay. I'm Egon Schraude. I'm an early intervention assistant and union rep for Westover Hills Elementary. One of the bargaining priorities for our next contract is best practices for instruction because teachers need time, reasonable class sizes, reliable coverage, and autonomy to deliver high-quality instruction. We need more protected planning time at all levels so teachers can prepare lessons, assess student work, and collaborate. For elementary specifically, shortening the student bell schedule by 30 minutes will ensure regular, meaningful planning without extending teachers' workday. Setting and enforcing reasonable class size caps and ratios at every grade level ensures instruction is manageable and individualized support is possible. Finally, we need clear policies for coverage. When staff must cover an absence or vacancy, there must be substitute support and equitable compensation and protection so their primary responsibilities are not neglected. When teachers have adequate planning time, reasonable class sizes, and dependable coverage, instruction improves, morale improves, and students thrive. It takes time and intention to negotiate a good deal. The framework guiding the next three years of our partnership deserves more than six weeks of consideration. RPS workers deserve a thorough and truly collaborative negotiation process that isn't rushed or limited under the guise of efficiency. As the gentleman repping Teamsters said, "A lot of us weren't in the room when this happened, and it shows." Our students deserve teachers who aren't running on fumes and surviving on hopes and dreams. I urge the board to vote no on this resolution, and I support the formation of a committee wholly dedicated to doing this the way it should have been done all along. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Liz Bartonstein. I am a fourth-year teacher in RPS. I'm here to urge our school board to vote no on the proposed changes to our CBA terms. Maslow over Bloom. It's a philosophy we hear in education reminding us that a student's basic human needs must be met before they can engage in higher-level thinking and learning. At the bottom of Maslow's hierarchy of needs are physiological needs, followed by safety needs. RPS workers simply want the ability to advocate for these basic needs, which we know encompass students, teachers, and administration alike. As we teach in crumbling, molding, and leaking buildings, attempt to satisfy increasingly stringent VDOE and district requirements for curriculum, and educate in an environment where we don't just anticipate, we expect there to be gun violence. How can we suggest that adults caring for our children not get to have a say in the conditions of that environment? Teaching is not getting easier, and it's more important now than ever that we make every effort to ensure teachers are supported. We are better than this in Richmond, and our children and educators deserve better. Not to mention, we are still in a teacher shortage. What will these restrictions communicate to would-be educators who are considering employment with RPS?
Thirty seconds.
Collective bargaining is not the boogeyman. It is just what the title suggests, an attempt to collectively reach an agreement on terms that work for both parties. Weakening the CBA in ways that these changes propose is not a good-faith way to support our staff and students, and it sets a dangerous precedent for the future of our district. Many of us are not just RPS teachers but city residents who voted for the members of this board. Respectfully, I ask that you please remember that you represent us and work for us as elected officials. I sincerely hope you plan to reject these changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Dr. Jennifer Summers. I am a resident of the 6th District. I'm a member of the community. I am a federal employee and a member of the National Treasury's Employees Union, Chapter 297, and I'm also a proud product of public schools, which is why I'm here. I want to urge you to vote no on these changes to the collective bargaining resolution for all the excellent reasons that have already been stated by REA members and others. RPS employees know what our students need, and they know their needs. It is very widespread that teachers are not paid enough, and their requests are common sense. All I hear are things that are very reasonable. So I urge you to work with them and understand where they're coming from and value the collective bargaining agreement. The actions taken to undermine union power in Richmond reflect actions taken by the Trump administration against NTEU, and it undermines not just the short term but the long term. The loss of federal employees is going to be felt for generations. The same will happen in Richmond. You need to protect Richmond employees and public schools, and I urge you to vote no. These employers are the foundation of this community, and the community of Richmond is watching what choices you make here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. As Mr. Strauss comes forward, I'd also ask Finnegan Pollard, Chris Hollis, Jacob Peters, and Sean Caesar Cassar. My apologies if I'm mispronouncing. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Strauss, and I'm a treasurer of the Richmond Education Association, speaking as an individual, but I'm also speaking on one of the priorities for the Union, which is around appropriate staffing. As you'll see from this piece of paper, there are four different bullet points here with the current provisions to the collective bargaining agreement that would be almost half of what we could bring to the table. I think the reality is that the original resolution was a compromise, the first round of negotiation being only two topics. This is further limiting that. Just looking back at the Central Office unit that was negotiated, there were 18, or 13 different proposals for just ASL interpreters, and that unit represents family liaisons, IT workers, a whole lot of folks. And so just to work through something like that would take over three years for one group of employees within a unit. And so I think with the proposal for only 10 things, that this is regressive from what we currently had the first round, and I really think that we need to continue this process so that we can really refine it. Folks have mentioned what's happening on the state level, which is also thinking about how this is just like a step in the wrong direction. This has been described as like an itchy sweater that, you know, one size fits all, and it's, maybe some people aren't going to be totally happy with it, but in the teaching world, we call that punishing the entire class, and that's usually something that you want to avoid. And so I think that we need to be more intentional, more specific with this process, and it needs to be public so not just the unions can engage, but the public can learn about collective bargaining. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Finn Pollard. I'm a resident of the 2nd District, and I'm here as a member of Sunrise Richmond, and I will be speaking on behalf of the organization today. Sunrise is a young adult-led climate justice group in the city of Richmond, and we believe strong labor unions and collaborative decision-making are key in RPS, are a vital part of climate justice here in Richmond. As such, we ask the school board to vote no on the proposed changes to the collective bargaining resolution this evening. If changes are necessary to the resolution, we believe the school board should form a committee that includes representatives from the board, the administration, and the unions with a longer timeline to ensure that the final document is something that everyone can support and celebrate. A key part of climate justice is ensuring that folks have what they need to be able to adapt to climate change. This means that people need to be able to be paid well and have good working conditions. If someone has to go to another job just to pay their bills, this this is not fostering a healthy workplace. It is not climate justice. It is not helping RPS students. As such, RPS teachers and staff should be able to collaborate with the school board and superintendents.
30 seconds.
Oh, do I have three minutes or only one minute?
You're speaking as an individual.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was speaking as an organization on behalf of Sunrise. So I ask that this board vote no to the proposed changes. I also would like to mention that there were 20 people outside today who were not able to get in to be able to see this. And then last month, there were 40 people outside who were not able to join this meeting because this room is not big enough to fit everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, school board and cameras. Yes, my name is Chris Hollis. I'm a representative for the RPS transportation workers with Laiona. I'm here today. I've attended the meetings for the several weeks to come up with a good resolution. I am perplexed as to what's wrong with the one that we currently have. I don't know if everybody's familiar with what happened April 25th of this year. Five people's lives were changed. The RPS five, they're dubbed the RPS five. It took us two months, and they're back employed. But I say that because without having a fair process, they would still be unemployed today. So I feel that gutting a resolution that is for the workers is something that is unprecedented. But to understand that these children, at the end of the day, is what we all need to be focused on. To have adequate transportation, good teachers, good janitorial workers. I mean, all RPS workers matter. You guys matter. Your constituents in the back voted to put you in here to make the decisions for the people at the end of the day. So I ask that you just govern your conscience, do the right thing, vote for what's going to help people and not hurt people. I came all the way up here to brag. I've been bragging on you guys for like over a year now. I organize the Tidewater Cities everywhere from Newport News down to Chesapeake, and you guys are like a beacon light for all these cities who do not even have collective bargaining. They don't even have a resolution. Portsmouth is the only Tidewater City that has a resolution, and it's a lame duck. Nobody's moving on it. Glover's not moving on it. But we look at you guys for inspiration because of what you have put in place being one of the first cities to do so. So I just ask that you just look at yourselves, make the right decisions that's going to progress and not regress. That's what really matters at the end of the day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Sean Cassar. I'm the labor co-chair for the Richmond chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. I'm here today to ask on behalf of all the Richmanders we represent that you vote no on the changes to the CBA ordinance. After the same rushed process, we are here discussing the same one-sided document that brought us back here. After talking with those in the negotiations, the union partners agree that the proposal does not represent the full scope of the negotiations that the union administration had over the last month. There are omissions, lingering struck language, and agreed upon wordage changes that did not, did or didn't make their way into the final product. Maybe because the process was rushed or bad faith. Who's to say? The document itself also has an underlying assumption that is incredibly disrespectful to the teachers and staff who make sure Richmond schools are safe and nurturing, something we've all been celebrating over the last few meetings. The remaining changes in this document, specifically around bargaining impasse and union rep access, assume that the teachers and staff, which are indistinguishable from these unions, don't currently prioritize their students' best interests, and despite history showing differently, are unable to negotiate while accounting for financial burdens that the district faces. If anyone understands financial creativity and sacrifice in order to make the schools function, it's them. Now on to the process. Administration took up almost the entirety of last month to explain its rationale for these changes, which means negotiations didn't actually take place until last Wednesday, giving the unions even less time than before to report back to their membership on what actually was changing. I would also add that the lack of participation from the school board in these discussions is equally frustrating. Lastly, after the gubernatorial election results on last Thursday, the changes you ultimately make here would be moot in a few months down the line. And it's up to you all to decide what kind of public perception and relationship you want to have with your staff when those new rules go into effect. Your political careers depend on your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, school board. My name is Jacob Peters. I live here in Richmond in the 2nd District. I'm an elective representative of the Virginia Young Democrats and the chair of the Labor Caucus. I've come here tonight to advocate for a strong collective bargaining resolution that equally privileges the teachers in the city of Richmond. I've come with intent to reaffirm to the council the values of the Democratic voters of this city and the position of the labor movement within the Democratic Party. It is the position of this caucus of Democrats to support unionization efforts led by working people of this city. We therefore ask that the school board vote no on the proposed changes to the collective bargaining resolution this evening. I was inspired tonight by the testimony provided by Maple, our student representative, and the interactions that he described between highly skilled and energized teachers and their students, and how that creates outcomes which benefit our students. We cannot expect these outcomes without a strong union of teachers who also support each other. In addition to my work with the, within the local and state Democratic Party, I work as an electrician here in the city. I owe the quality of my working conditions exclusively to the valiant efforts of the local IBW 666 electricians. I am a non-union electrician. However, and despite this, the low rates of unionization in the state, the influence of the strong contract that the IBW negotiates is felt in my workplace. Unionization of workers and strong collective bargaining agreements benefit us all. The teachers of this city have a strong, active union, and we've seen this tonight. With a vote no on this collective bargaining resolution tonight, teachers in the city can continue to expect higher pay, working conditions, and benefits that they deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One last time, I'd like to call Corbin Little, if you're here. All right, then this concludes our public comment section. At this time, we'll move to board action items. Receive for action head start report. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Cameron's, and the board members. In your package, you have the program report for September. You also have the minutes for the policy council for September, and you also have the financial report for September. But I would like to add an update on enrollment. As of today, Early Head Start has 54 out of 56. Two are just waiting for medical forms, so they will start by next week. So that will be 100% enrollment for Early Head Start. At this point, we are 97, which is, we are in the safe zone. Head Start as of today has 459. Six will start this week. 11 are in process of getting medicals and asthma plans to start. So if we make it to that, that will be 93% of enrollment. But we're shooting for the 97 because that's the safe zone we head start. We also are restructuring the whole data system, SHO Plus, because we don't have physical files. So we are inputting all the informations and all the tracking forms into the system. Policy council elections will be this weekend on the 15th. So next Monday, we will have a new policy council. Any questions?
Mr. Cameron's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to note, are the bylaws in here or not?
No, no.
Okay.
They're not here.
I wanted to make sure that they're not.
Any questions, feedback? Need a motion then? Ms. Ricard.
So, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your report. Can you share with us if there is a plan in place? And has that plan been shared with the school board for the 104 slots that have not been filled?
At this point, we don't need 104 slots because our enrollment for Richmond is 513. And at this point, we are in 459 with six more starting this week. So we are not in the need for 104 slots. It's less than that.
Is it 400?
And the plan is that we're working with Luke, the enrollment team for BBI. We are meeting weekly. We are tracking the intakes, and we are tracking the sec spots and the start days. We have a, like a chat that is a tracking system that we can communicate on daily basics with each other. So we are working together as a team to get Head Start fully enrolled.
Follow-up, Madam Chair. So, Ms. De La Cruz, I'm looking at page three under Head Start Bullet 1, where it reads, "We have 405 children enrolled and 513 funded slots." So actually, I said 104. It's actually, because I was thinking it was 409. So my apologies, but that's where I got the number from. So you said 459. Can you tell us where that 459 number is? Because on page three, Bullet 1, it has 405 children currently enrolled. Can you talk a little bit to that number? Or is that not an accurate number?
Yes. When we submitted the report, that was the number for September, but the numbers are increasing day by day, hour by hour. We're enrolling daily. We are studying kids daily. So the numbers for enrollment is a number that is changing every day.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Have a motion. Ms. Ricard.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Head Start program reports, minutes, and financial statements presented by the administration.
It's been moved by Ms. Ricard and seconded by Ms. Rizzi, Madam Clerk. Mr. Percival.
Yes.
Ms. Ricard.
Yes.
Mr. Farouk.
Yes.
Mr. Hitcheth.
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Jafari.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Glad to hear those numbers are increasing hour by hour. Really excited about that. Now we'll move to 5.02. Receive for action collective bargaining resolution update. Mr. Percival. Mr. Cameron's.
I just wanted to thank everybody for coming and sharing your feedback this evening. It is not easy to come and speak before a public body, and I'm truly grateful. I've done it myself in other venues, and it is always nerve-wracking. And so regardless of what side of this particular issue or any issue folks are on, we do appreciate the engagement, truly. It does certainly make us better. I also want to thank our union partners. I do believe last week collectively, we struck a great agreement that is a middle ground that I think protects all of the core principles of collective bargaining, which I support and everybody on this dais supports, while also doing our very best to maintain the financial responsibility that we have for the school system. And so I, again, just want to express gratitude to everybody who has engaged in this process and look forward to what comes next. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Percival.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the collective bargaining resolution for the school board of the city of Richmond dated November 7th, 2025.
Madam Chair, colleagues, I second that.
It's been moved by Mr. Percival and seconded by Mr. Jafari. Before we go into a vote, are there any, is there any debate? Mr. Farouk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, we had lots of discussion at our last school board meeting about this. And so while members of the school board were not in these negotiations, we all got updates and were in contact with our staff as well as our collective bargaining partners about what was happening. And so I remember getting updates after certain meetings that people were frustrated. They felt like that we were making no progress. And then it looked like that there was some progress where there was maybe two or three points where our admin staff and our collective bargaining partners found a compromise. And then now it seems like after some due diligence, some of our collective bargaining partners have decided they did not want to support that. I just want to point out that when we began this process, there has been, and we don't have to go through all of it, and some of our speakers mentioned it, but there's not a lot of trust, right? There's been a lot of things that have happened that have eroded the trust. And so it was, to me, it was normal that there didn't seem to be some progress. I do think it's heartening that we made some progress, even if people later changed their minds, or there was a vote and people decided that they didn't like it. I think there is some progress, and so I'm grateful for our staff and our collective bargaining partners for coming to those meetings. That being said, because there isn't agreement from all the parties who are in the room, I can't support this resolution and these changes, and for that reason, I'll be voting no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you so much. I want to first thank the administration for the consistency and the work. Meeting with school board members, sharing the updates as they knew the updates were at that time the updates were shared. I also want to thank the two school board members who reached out to me to ask my historical perspective from 2021, when the first resolution was created alongside then-co-chair of the, of the team at that time, Ms. Renzi. So I really appreciate that. I shared it before, and I will share that again. One of the things that I have learned in this process, and I am consistent in saying, is that people will remember how you make them feel in a process. And so even though I support the work that the administration has done, it's a lot of hard work, and it was difficult work. And that has not gone unnoticed from me as a school board representative. But I have a duty to my constituency, and I also have a duty to the teachers to whom I serve and the staff, the certified and the classified staff, every single one who's employed by Richmond Public Schools. In this process, I felt there was a time where we had actually climbed up the mountain together. We had reached the peak, and we had begun to come down the mountain together. When we have partners in the process that has felt, and they have been consistent from day one, indicating to us as a team that they have not felt involved, and they, their voices have not been clearly heard. They never expected, from my point of view, nor that I hear, that they expected everything that they had bargained for or put on a table. But one, but one thing I did hear that they expected was to be treated, to be treated like professionals. And many of them that I have heard from do not feel that way, unfortunately. I wasn't in the room, but I'm hearing their voices, and their voices matter to me. And so for those reasons that I have described before, and I do appreciate the first delay that we had. I really do. And for reasons that I'm sharing, again, this, this evening, I too will be voting no on the resolution. I've shared that. It's not new. I have not moved from it. I haven't wavered from it. I have been consistent since day one. I have been consistent since day one. If certain things had not happened, I would not be supporting the collective bargaining resolution as is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, so, um, I'm super nervous about this, but I'm going to try to put my thoughts together. Yeah, I truly appreciate all of the speakers. As a lifelong educator, I've never really done anything else. Um, I, I understand, uh, that teachers deserve and need to have a voice. And I also understand that during this process, there are some points of contention on both ends of this. Um, we absolutely, you know, neither side, we can't have everything we want. But I want to make it clear that what has been proposed here is not a gutting of the collective bargaining agreement. Interestingly, it was mentioned, as, um, you know, I am a part of the original, uh, you know, co-chair at the committee with Dr. Harris Mohammed. Um, I heard someone today mention that that original document protected workers. If it did, I never heard about it. Um, and knowing that it did, though, does my heart good. Um, and I really do wish someone had expressed that before now. Um, never heard a word of gratitude from anyone. Um, and it would have gone a long way. I'm a human being too. We've worked hard to hear you, and we've adjusted much. The school board, um, was engaged throughout the process. Uh, the administration updated us every step of the way. And I do want to say that there weren't very, uh, many references to specific areas that were adjusted. And there was no mention of the rationale for why those things were adjusted. I think that we have reached a point where both sides have made some fair compromises that makes sense for our district and that puts the needs of our students first. So, I encourage our communities to read the new contract for yourselves um, so that you can see what the changes are. And hopefully, you'll see that they're the result of hours of work and compromises. And I can say that this is not, it's not representative of a gutting of this original bargain, bargaining, um, in fact. And I would hope that tonight, we can go ahead and vote on this and let the real negotiations get started.
Thank you. Mr. Jafari?
And colleagues. As I've listened, came down on the side of differing the vote because I just want the process to be fair for everyone. But then, as I listened, and if I can echo, uh, my colleagues' comments, I really didn't hear any specifics about what was in the proposed CBA. I, I just want to make it clear that we have a duty to not just implement a CBA, but we have to revisit it and refine it. And we can't do either of those from one vantage point. We have to look at this from the vantage point of the entirety of the division. Yeah, in this position, we expect criticism. Uh, we expect them hyperbole, every now and again, a few metaphors, few similes. But there is nothing present in the proposed CBA that destroys democracy, removes workers' rights, adds or makes it difficult to process of grieving, or underpays or attempts to drive away teachers. I think, uh, administration has shown to be on the cutting edge of, as a matter of fact, we have to pull them back sometimes to keep them from, uh, just, just willingly, just giving raises. We have to question those things. So, again, I just say that there's, there's been no effort to drive away teachers or to do any of that. Um, as I listen, many of the comments have referred to authoritarianism and dictatorships and one even, uh, referred to government shutdowns, which clearly we have nothing to do with now. When you come and speak, you, you're able to speak about whatever you want. But again, I, I can, I have to point to specifics. I, I, I have to be driven. I'm only one ninth of the vote. I have to be driven by specifics. And when we're all over the place and comparing us to the federal administration, which, which we don't emulate or even attempt to emulate, I, I just don't think that that's helpful. So, uh, I would have to say that, you know, accordingly, I support the CBA. And should it come down the road that, uh, it's changed July one, so be it. We'll conform to that. Should it be the next time around that we collaborate again and we get closer, that's fine too. But tonight, we have a duty to act on this, and accordingly, as I said, I support it as proposed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Hedgepath?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I, I want to echo the words of, uh, my colleague, Mr. Farouk and Dr. Harris Mohammed, and the appreciation for, uh, the administration and our partners and, and, uh, and working through this, this difficult process. Uh, I, at the onset of this, uh, had concerns about the, uh, the, the, the speed of it. Uh, if it's too fast, if it feels too fast, it, it, it doesn't feel good and it's probably not right. Uh, I, uh, opposed the, uh, the delay. Uh, I didn't feel like a month was, uh, was appropriate to do this process justice. I also don't appro, I don't support a delay today. I, I, uh, I will go back to what I suggested at the beginning and what I, uh, what I, uh, emailed to and proposed to my colleagues last week, was, uh, I, I really believe that we need to go with the original CBA for this process so that we can do it justice going forward. I think in tandem, we can appoint a work group that combines the administration, our union partners, and school board members, and give that work group a four to six-month window to, in real time, observing the process, be able to provide feedback that can then govern a new resolution, uh, solution in, in the future without being rushed. Uh, I think it's, it's fair to do it with more time. I think it, uh, goes, goes a long way to demonstrate our collaborative effort, uh, for our partners. And I think it does a lot to repair, uh, damaged trust that, uh, that is, uh, is palpable. So, uh, I'm gonna continue, I'm gonna vote no tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Many thanks to the administration for all the hours and, um, the length of, of work that has been put in place and also to all of the unions as well as, as sharing what's been on their minds all along. From the very beginning, um, I stated that I thought a month was not enough. And I, I repeated that more than once because I was hoping we would get to the point of reaching consensus across the board. And I really thought we had reached consensus until I started receiving all of these emails and from what I've heard tonight as well. From the very beginning, my thought was, for all of the hours and time that the administration puts in this to get a third party to come in to help us with this process, even though we're not at the point of the overall negotiations. But, um, I, I cannot, I listened tonight. I've read my emails. And I think everyone has well intentions, but we have not reached consensus. I agree with what my, um, colleague, Mr. Jafari, stated regarding not hearing any specifics. But apparently, something just isn't right at this point. Um, so therefore, I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Mr. Percival?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm, I'm gonna echo my colleagues, Ms. Rizzi and Mr. Jafari in noting the reduction in specifics in the public comments, which I think is, is a testament to the process that we did go through. Uh, I think that's a good thing. What I did hear in public comments, if my notes are accurate, is that we should have strong boundaries as a basis for negotiations, someone else's words, not mine. Um, that it is a living document, that teaching is not getting easier. The teachers are the foundation of RPS, that we really need strong labor unions, we need good pay, we need well-maintained buildings, we need fair process, and that we up here are elected to do what's best for RPS. And obviously, our political careers are on the line. And ultimately, what we really need are strong contracts. I could not agree more with all of those sentiments. And if I thought that anything in this document ran counter to any of those sentiments, I would be the first one to say so. To Ms. Rizzi and Mr. Jafari's comments about specifics, the two specifics that I have read through emails that have brought about are, one, access to our buildings without prior notification. And I said last night publicly that the school board members ourselves follow the exact same procedure. In order to enter a school building, we give prior notice. So, asking for, asking for special treatment above what we go through is not something that I'm going to support. The other thing, the other specific that I have seen is the grievance process. And when I have talked to some representatives of the unions, I said, "Someone is gonna have to explain to me how the school board is not an impartial panel when it comes to grievances." And I understand that we are being representative as fat cats. Uh, I do enjoy a good inflatable outside as much as the next person. But we do not hold stock in RPS Inc. We do not benefit from one party being heard over another. We are elected to do a job, which is to run a school system the best that we can, and we are going to do that. And we are going to make sure that everybody's voice is heard and that the best process is put in place to make education happen. As far as the proposals, it is interesting to me that the ten proposal process was put forth by a union and that many of the compromises that exist in this document were put forth by union members and agreed to by the administration and by the union. So, I will just say that I don't believe that this document represents some of the sentiment that was put forth this evening. I think when it comes to specifics, I think this accomplishes what we needed to accomplish. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Ricard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to thank everyone who has contributed to this process, who has spoken about it. I know everyone feels very strongly about it. I have worked, um, in a state that has unions and been a member of a teachers' union and a Unit B administrators' union. I've also worked in a county where there were no unions. I am grateful that RPS has a union. I am grateful that our teachers have a right and all our staff have a right to grieve, have a right to bargain. These are important things. Many people don't have them. I don't currently have them in the job that I am, but that was a choice I made when I changed careers. I've thought a lot about if I was still in a union, how I would perceive the changes to the collective bargaining agreement. And I will be completely honest that I do feel they are fair. And so, while I will be voting for the collective bargaining agreement, what I do want to say publicly is that does not mean that, and I know I speak this on all my colleagues, regardless of what we're voting, that does not mean that we will not continue to advocate for our teachers, our students, and our parents. That when teachers call me, I will pick up the phone and listen to their issues going on at their school, and I will make those issues known to the superintendent. And that's not bargaining. That's just being an elected official and listening to your public because that is what we are elected to do. And I hope that I will continue to get those phone calls so that we can continue to make the day in and day out workings of our schools be safe and good for our students.
Thank you. I, uh, echo everyone's, uh, sentiments as it relates to the work that has been put on all sides regarding, uh, revisiting the resolution, namely, the administration, um, for their tireless efforts and galvanizing not just the union members, but us as a board individually to ensure that we continue to have a say, um, and share concerns and continue to advocate on the community's behalf as we received information. Um, I would like to also thank the unions for continuing to share your feedback. We've received countless emails, I've had conversations. And a lot of what the draft of this resolution that we have now truly was inspired uh, by the feedback that was shared by several members and individuals of the union. Our ultimate goal with this conversation was to ensure that everyone had a say. The you, the board, uh, several months ago, could have made a blanket decision to change the resolution without any purview into the intent or heart of what the community wanted. In order to ensure that that was not the case, we allowed for everyone to come together to have an opportunity to share. When we heard that we, that the community felt that it was rushed, I personally requested from the board to extend it for more time. When I walked away from a conversation on last Wednesday, I thought that there was a consensus, as, um, some of my colleagues have shared, and to my surprise, after which there were some who changed their minds or were informed and did not agree. And you have every right to do so. But I want to, want to say is this, the work doesn't stop after this vote. We will continue to advocate, support, and, um, listen to each and every staff member uh, because the work that you do tirelessly, day in and day out, is extremely important to the value of our students. And so, it's in our best interest to move forward in the spirit of collaboration. And it's my hope that once we make our decision tonight, that we'll do just, just that. And so, with that, let's go for it. Does Ms. Rizzi have any more time?
Fifteen seconds.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I, you know, I just want to say, I, I'm going to support this because I know that the first time we voted, there was nothing close to a consensus. And I deeply in my heart believe it did a lot of good. And so, I am going on faith that that is the same here.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it is my, also my commitment that if we go through this process and it doesn't work, we'll revisit it. And with that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Percival?
Yes.
Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Mr. Farouk?
No.
Mr. Hedgepath?
No.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Mr. Jafari?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Motion, Madam Chair?
What is that? Is that in the room or is that somewhere else? As you transition out, thank you so much for your time tonight. We're gonna transition into the next part of our meeting, which is five point zero three, received for approval.
Motion, Madam Chair? Pardon me. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we create a work group to continue some of these negotiations for the future.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Farouk and seconded by Mr. Hedgepath. Before we go to a vote, is there a debate? And I see a hand already raised, Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Point of clarification, uh, do you mean forming a group that will work on the process for how this will take place in the future? for how this will take place in the future? I'm not sure what you're proposing here.
Dr. Harris Muhammad has a comment when convenient.
Thank you.
I will modify my motion. So I will say, Madam Chair, I motion that the school board create a work group comprised of one representative from the school board, representatives from our administration, representatives from our union partners, that will work over the next six to eight months to, and have a public and transparent process, to discuss and come up with suggestions and consensus changes to the CBA resolution to go into effect next year.
I still second that.
Dr. Harris Muhammad.
Yes, thank you. Couple of questions. I wasn't prepared this evening to vote on a motion such as this, considering it has so many moving parts. All of the parts we can't discuss right now because we don't know what those parts are. Do I agree that we should form a working group? Yes, I do. There are some things that are missing and that we're missing in this process that was just voted upon. I just think that in the light of full transparency, that we so often discuss the motion, and I'm one, I'm one of the mindset, that a motion can come forth at any time of the evening. There is no statute, there is nothing of Robert Rosa Order to state that it cannot. However, I have been supporting that motions do not come from the floor the night of without conversation or notification to all board members. And so I don't know if that happened, if it did happen, Mr. Farouk, I apologize, I missed it. And so I said all that to say, is this something that we want to vote on now? Is it something that we could possibly discuss in December where we can give each other some feedback? And the reason why I'm saying that, I'm just going to be very frank, I'm not going to beat around the bush. Many of you champion, champion that motions would not come the night of. It was out there. And so, well, particularly without feedback from the community. So I'm just taken aback that it has happened. I just, I don't know what to say. And so I just wanted to share that. But if the majority of the board supports it, then go forth and conduct the work group. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Farouk, for that suggestion. I'm not ready to vote tonight on a motion to move forward. I would like to have the opportunity to get some details. I think it's great, but who's going to serve? Why just one board member? I'm thinking it should be two, as we have on other committees. So I would just like to hear more particulars. I don't think there's anything wrong with it. In fact, I think it's right as we address the opportunity to collaborate and reach consensus. So my suggestion tonight, I'm not ready to vote, as Dr. Harris Muhammad stated regarding, I know it's not a policy, but just to have some information. So maybe we need to have an ad hoc, I don't, some type of committee per se, that's my suggestion moving forward. But to vote tonight, to put in place, one, to get started now for next year, I just ask for more details that is thought through.
Thank you. And just to clarify, because there is a motion and a second, we do have to vote unless he rescends his motion. So just, I want to, his, Mr. Hedgepath's hand was raised, but I wanted to clarify that just so we are on the same page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just probably going to say the same thing that maybe Mr. Farouk is, that maybe perhaps this is something that we can just propose during new business, that will be a future item rather than a motion for today. It was something that we've talked about since last month, and it was something that I wrote an email about a work group, so it's not a new idea. But if the board is not ready to move on that, then I'm happy to, happy to move that to a new business item.
Madam Chair, I rescind the motion and plan to bring this up as a topic during new business on the agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, did you, okay. All right. Moving right along to received for approval, collective bargaining agreement for Teamster Local 592.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to bring forward to the board the already ratified Teamsters Local 592 contract, which covers principals, assistant principals, and directors, and request your approval.
Mr. Percival.
Madam Chair, I would move that we adopt the, we approve the collective bargaining agreement for Teamster Local 592 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Percival and seconded by Ms. Ricard, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Percival.
Yes.
Ms. Ricard.
Yes.
Mr. Farouk.
Yes.
Mr. Hedgepath.
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Muhammad.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Jafari.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you and congratulations, we're excited. All right. I just need a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
It's been moved by Mr. Hedgepath and seconded by Mr. Jafari, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Mr. Percival.
Ms. Ricard.
Yes.
Mr. Farouk.
Yes.
Mr. Hedgepath.
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Muhammad.
I've got a question, but I'll go ahead and vote.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
That's okay, go right ahead, that's, that's fine.
What's your vote, Dr. Harris Muhammad?
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Jafari.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right. Did you want to ask your question now, Dr. Harris Muhammad?
The vote has already been taken, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now for new business. Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure where we're headed with the, or what you all want to do with the recommendations that I presented yesterday with the vacant property and facilities committee. Are we going to take a vote? Or are we approving by consensus? Are we, I'm not sure what.
My, I believe that we approved by consensus yesterday.
That's fine.
I will say that as we, anything that's with budgetary implications, that'll probably fall within line with the budget items, but that's just my thought. Mr. Cameras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because it involves the disposition of property, I would very much like a vote of the whole school board. So my recommendation would be to place it on the December business meeting agenda or action by the whole board.
All right, thank you. And I have one other. I requested a report related to the disparate scores that exists among subgroups, especially at the elementary school level. I think that might be coming up. I just want to add that I'd love to see, like, historical data, maybe going back about five years to go along with that report.
Yes, we had a conversation at our last agenda set-in meeting. Mr. Cameras shared that they had some one-off conversation with you, and I told him and requested that that information be discussed openly with everyone else. So I think the plan is for it to be in other information in December.
If I may.
Yeah. I can clarify that in a second, but I'll let Mr. Cameras share.
I had a subsequent conversation with Ms. Rizzi and was going to recommend that it's an admin update discussion item at the December, if possible, given that there was interest from other school boards.
And I'm totally fine with that. I think we are just trying to navigate the timeframe, and so we're trying to utilize other information more, but certainly, we're always open to pull those items out into open discussion. But I'm totally okay with having it as an item under administrative topics. Thank you. Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In our consent agenda on yesterday, the early college academy report was listed. However, when I asked to have that information, my concern was regarding support in terms of study hall. And in the report, it listed that because of schedules at different schools, that the support was not, it wasn't clear. So I'm asking that that information is pulled out. My concern is that we move forward in making sure that each student receives the support he or she needs to have. I know they have coaches in place, but it doesn't always mean that they are being reached. I didn't see any data to support how many students were seeing a coach or what the consequences were. But I do want to go back to the part with the study hall, who's having it, how many students are attending. I can write this up if you'd like, I can do that.
Yeah, if you could write it up and email it, that way we can ensure that the administration has all the points to cover, and we can exclude that in our next meeting.
And I have a second ask. The renaming proposal for Armstrong High School, I know it was supposed to have been on the agenda for tonight, and it was not, as I mentioned to you, that it was not. But I did see Mr. Jefferson, and he explained to me that it was moved on because of the overload. However, his persons were calling me from Armstrong and from Kennedy that, and I said, "Come to the meeting on Tuesday night before receiving the agenda." Then being told later that there is a special meeting that's going to be in place. But I don't think, I want to make sure if that's happening, it's stated, that all board members have the opportunity to be a part of that. I know it's during the time that we have the Virginia School Board Association's conference. But I've not, as the board member representing the seventh district, of which Armstrong and used to be Kennedy existed, I just would like to have some consensus. If three board members were invited, I think all nine of us should be. And has it been announced, or has that changed?
I've not heard anything about a meeting.
I got an email.
Okay. Yeah, I was unaware. We did, that topic was broached, and Doc, Dr., Mr. Cameras shared that he would connect with you offline to discuss next steps and would come back with more information. And so that was the last I've heard, because I did ask per your request. And in terms of a, some type of meeting, I don't know anything about that.
So let me clarify. So on November 20th, because several members of the association reached out, we wanted to have a proactive meeting around how we can honor the legacy. And the vote has not been taken, we wanted to hear from them. And so again, we scheduled something for November 20th, and we invited the board members that showed interest, but it's already been noticed, and so anybody that wants to attend can come, I'll send it out to everybody.
Who was, who was on the invitation?
So there were three board members that were invited. You want me to name them specifically?
I'm just, I'm just wondering, I'm curious.
So we invited Mr. Jafari, Ms. Burke, and Ms. Dr. Harris Muhammad.
Okay.
I can invite everybody, I mean, it just was for people who showed interest. But happy to send it out to everybody, because Patrice has already sent out the notice.
It's a listening session, it has not been noticed as a board meeting, so I just put out a public advisory because there were three board members included in the discussion about the listening session.
It's not a special meeting, it is to hear from the alumni association. It's not a meeting about a vote or anything, just to hear about how they want their legacy to be honored, because quite frankly, they have stated that there are certain things that are there, but it's not enough. And so I just wanted to be proactive before we came before the board, and I could actually have some information to share.
Thank you. I have thoughts, but I'll, Mr. Hedgepath to share first.
Thanks, Madam Chair, I just have the question, is this going to be recorded? Because as I think it was alluded to earlier, a number of us will be at the Virginia School Board Association, we've already committed to that. But I do think that to Ms. Burke's point, it's important for us all to hear the concerns, so that way we know how to move forward.
We can reach out to the alumni association, they actually chose the date. And so we can reach out to Mr. Mallory to see if they are able to adjust the schedule.
Thank you. And I appreciate you being proactive and wanting to hear what they have to share, just in full transparency and, you know, ensuring that everyone is on the same page is helpful so that there, it minimizes the confusion, because we were kind of caught off guard just now. But I appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, but just, it's a listening session, it had nothing to do with it.
And it's totally fine, that's, that's all. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Ms. Burke. Mr. Hedgepath.
Madam Chair, I'd request as we move into our budget season, that we have a full report of all our contracted services and partners that we work with, our vendor list, that we have that available for us as, you know, as possible by the administration during the budget process, please.
Thank you. Ms. Ricard.
This is not an urgent agenda item, but I would love, even if it's under other informational, an update on our school breakfasts and lunches and how the new offerings are going, if they're being implemented, how that's going with cost, how are the students liking it, and maybe just what continued efforts there may be to continue to refine our lunches and make sure that they have locally grown things and are appealing for our students.
Thank you. Ms. Burke, and then I have a couple.
Thank you, not, this is not what you asked for at this point, but I, because of what Ms. Ricard just stated, I do want to thank our wellness chief officer, Ms. Parks, to make sure that every child has the opportunity to get breakfast every morning, because it has some challenges. But every child, thanks to what she did, in terms of making sure that every child receives the services of being able to eat breakfast and or lunch when they come in. It's not our food, so I thank you for stepping out and addressing that. You can go home now, okay? You've done your day.
Mr. Farouk, then I have a couple.
Dr. HSM has something as well.
Okay. Is that, is this?
Yeah, Madam Chair, for, I guess, next month's meeting, I would recommend that we, so first I want to clarify that what Dr. Harris Muhammad said. We did change the procedures that we use for our meetings and limited night of agenda changes, but that does not apply to motions, you can make all kinds of motions at each point in the agenda. So yes, regarding my proposal, that probably we should aim for the December meeting to vote on is the creation of a work group, because we heard lots of people, obviously very emotional about the process, feeling like they were not involved or that it was moving too fast. So creating a longer process, something more predictable that we can plan around, and hopefully, if we have more time, it will take up less, it will be less intense, right? We're not going to have two meetings a week, maybe we'll only have one meeting a month, who knows? But again, thinking about starting possibly in early March, where we assemble a work group, so it would be a formal work group of the school board, that could have one to two, you know, an appropriate number of school board representatives, and, you know, our administrative staff, however many, you know, there won't be any limit on that number, because we would need to bring in the appropriate staff depending on the discussion. And then at least one representative from each of our collective bargaining partners. And the purpose would be And the purpose would be to take more time to allow people to talk through different proposals. I'm, I genuinely am heartened that we got close to a compromise. I think that shows that obviously, we all work together, right? And so despite the lack of trust, we are able to talk through and, and come close. So I think we might find more things to talk through and mull on. Also, I think having a predictable process over the course of six to eight months creates kind of a stress valve, where if more things pop up in our collective bargaining process, they can become agenda items for discussion at one of these meetings as a possible change to the CBA resolution. So yeah, my, my motion that I plan to bring up again in December will be to create this work group and have it meet over the next six to eight months with the specific charge of coming up with a list of consensus changes to the CBA resolution to be put before the school board for a vote, probably next October.
So is your request to start the conversation in December? Or for us to get to a place of vote? Because I, I think there's a.
Yeah, my, my specific proposal is for us to vote at our, at next month's meeting to create this work group.
Here's my, here's my internal challenge. I'm going to say it out loud. I appreciate the, the suggestion. I think the challenge is going to be, how do we do it in a way where the public has access to the information that we're sharing prior to December? Because if not, the first time we're going to really hear public comment is in December. And I just don't want it to be viewed as a similar situation as we're in now with the collective bargaining resolution where if we're including something that's going to include them, and they don't have a say in it, and we're going to make a vote in December. So that's what I'm, I'm being challenged with as I think through it. That's, I just wanted to share that out loud.
Sure. Yeah, I, I can, I think we can write this up as a resolution, which could then be posted online prior to the meeting.
And we have Ms. Burke, Mr. Jafari. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to have a, a working group that would represent all parties. My concern is, and maybe this will be a part of coming together, because we're, we're talking about being transparent. I think I'm, I'm getting that, so that we can collaborate better. However, as we talked as a board, or maybe this can be a public piece, whereas to have some sessions, not town hall meetings, but some sessions where we would have someone to come in. Yes, we are the model for the state of Virginia. Yes, we have made history in terms of, and I was chair during that time, and that was a lot of stress, but we made it through there well, and look where we are now. So I just want to make sure that as we, we talk about December or March, that that's SOL testing and stakes are higher, just, just, just what I want to go back to what was suggested earlier. And maybe having someone to get together to come up with a plan. Then we don't want to seem like it's the board running it. So, so if it's really going to be inclusive of every, every group, I just would like us to take some time to go through that. Maybe the first session would be open to the public to come in and just hear about how the, all the components of collective bargaining. This, this is new for me. But I'm so glad that the state of Virginia, the state of Virginia, the Commonwealth, the city of Richmond is, is leading the, leading the charge there. But I don't want us to get caught up in, in the, in the mess of what could take place.
Mr. Jafari?
Thanks, Madam Chair. On a clarification as to the mechanics of, of what's being recommended. Are we talking about what, an eight to 10-month process wherein at the end of the process, we revisit what we've just voted on tonight? Or are we talking about a process that upon the conclusion of it, at the expiration of the tenure, the time period for what we just voted on, then we would implement it? I'm unclear on when that implementation would take place.
Yeah, so I think this is going to take a little bit of time to just sort through, and I think we can, we, let's, we have it listed on the agenda setting for an up and coming meeting. And let's step away and kind of think through what that looks like, since this is your, you two have really kind of shared your aspiration to, to spearhead this. Perhaps you guys can connect and talk through some things. We just need to flesh it out a little bit more. Absolutely. And I think, does Dr. Harris Muhammad, do you have something as well?
Do, thank you. I would like to recommend to the school board and administration that we develop a policy or strengthen the current policy that we have for renaming school buildings, parts of a school building, any road, lake, river that may lead to a RPS building. Also, I wanted to share that the National School Board Association is having, again, in 2026, their annual advocacy conference in Washington DC. I will be attending. Also, I would like to share that my nonprofit organization, Northside Coalition for Children, Inc., is hosting a holiday drive this year. More information. Public is, is forthcoming. I will make sure I try to give updates. We are moving right into the holiday season. I would like to also know more about, this is from the administration, who is eligible for a local license and who is not. The state regulations are clear on the licensure plate page, but I am not 100% certain if our school division is currently following that process to the T. So I would like for us to receive information on who is eligible for a local license and who is not. And I do want to thank the administration for providing that data to the board, particularly because I requested it. So thank you for that. And then also, I would like to know, and if I missed this email, I apologize to the administration. I was looking through my emails, and the last email that I saw was pertaining to they were going to get back with me on an update as to why the virtual academy students cannot receive mail, meals. I understand that the email correspondence that was sent to me, but I'm still waiting on an update from the State Department of Education as to why they cannot. And then the last thing that I want to share, and I, I'm just, I'm saying this in with the love that I have in my heart. And it's, it's, and no way, let me leave with this. I'm not in any manner throwing shade, because I believe I look cute in many shades. But I will say that, Mr. Farouk, to your point, thank you so much. It was also about motions. That was made very clear in the training that we had before we took the oath of office, that there was some discontent that board members in the past had made agenda and agenda changes and motion changes. And this is not throwing any shade. I'm not, I'm not doing that. I'm just saying that if we're not going to stick with that, that's fine. We just need to make sure that it is supported by all and not just a few on the dais. So I just wanted to end with that. But thank you for your comment. I, I receive it in the spirit in which you gave it to me. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Percival wants to ask a clarifying question.
Dr. Harris Muhammad, just a clarifying question on your item for local licenses. Is that an ask for additional information and update? Or were you calling out the information that was provided as adequate? You, you wanted, you mentioned who is eligible for a local license and is RPS following a process? Are you seeking additional information? And I'm just trying to capture this for new business.
I would like to know more about who is eligible for a local license and who is not. The state regulations are clear, and I am not 100% certain that Richmond Public Schools is following that process.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just want to.
Thank you. Mr. Farouk?
Yes, briefly, just to answer my colleague, Mr. Jafari's question. Because the resolution passed today, those changes go into effect, and that becomes our new amended CBA resolution. So this work group would be dealing with the amended CBA resolution. And over the course of the next six to eight months, would be discussing further amendments. So not necessarily revoting on what we just voted on, but dealing with the new amended CBA resolution as it, as it will exist. So, you know, perhaps people will find out that some of those changes worked great, or maybe they will really hate them. But that, that is what the discussion will be. And there, I, I know that some people have emailed me and said there were even other things they were interested in visiting that did not make it to this resol, the, the proposal tonight that we voted on. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll end the conclusion. No, I'll, I'll conclude that topic.
This is great conversation. It's fine. Appreciate the dialogue. Makes us better. All right, who has our closed session? Mr. Wesley? Mr. Hedgepath?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Richmond convene in closed session to discuss and consider the the performance and possible discipline of two employees as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
It's been moved by Mr. Hedgepath and seconded by Ms. Rizzi, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Mr. Percival?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Mr. Farouk?
Yes.
Mr. Hedgepath?
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Muhammad?
I would like to vote, but I didn't hear, is it, what is the clause? I'm sorry.
To discuss and consider the performance and possible discipline of two employees as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Jafari?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.